You know how that works out.
Um.
Yeah. Um, the, uh, uh, okay. Help me out here, Big John. We're going to case seven B at this time.
Yes.
And to remind everybody, we'll do B and C. And then we'll get back to, uh, uh, we'll run across A right quick and then we'll get back to seven.
Yes, yes, sir. And this is a quasi judicial hearing, so this would be, uh, the appropriate time for anyone who is offering testimony to be placed under, under oath.
I think we might just come in over here to the city clerk and administer the oath at one time.
She really knows the drill.
He's from the edent, she's like his counsel. The whole thing is nothing but the truth.
Can we get your names before you walk away? If you don't mind, we know, we know Ms. Gallibor or Ms. Rebbins.
None, yes.
Thank you.
We got everybody wants to at this time sworn in.
All right, yes, sir. Um, so this, uh, case is a request of, for a special use permit, uh, concerning property at fifteen eighteen South Fayetteville Street. Uh, there's one parcel identification number as part of the request, seven, seven, five, zero, seven, five, four, four, eleven. It is for a new land use, uh, classified as a, um, off-premise billboard. And the, um, applicant in this case is Tele Billboards LLC. Um, there was a correction on the legal description from the very first packet that was in the report. So the property owner is Tomas LLC. Um, the correct address is fifteen eighteen South Fayetteville Street and the parcel number that I just read you is the correct parcel. The, uh, property is, uh, zoned I two general industrial. Um, the property is currently undeveloped. It's a little more than, uh, a quarter of an acre. It's point two eight acres. And so, uh, the, um, the design of the billboard is for, um, a, uh, height above twenty-two feet above grade. Uh, the dimensions are twelve by twenty-four or smaller. Um, there is a possibility for a digital LED display that is, um, is, um, requested. Um, so the request involves a new billboard, but before that new billboard is constructed, there is an existing billboard on the site that would be removed. So it's essentially replacing, um, a billboard that is, that is on the site. Um, and, uh, in terms of transportation, South Fayetteville Street is a state maintained major thoroughfare. Um, and billboards are subject to a review process by NC DOT. So if the council finds, um, in favor of the applicant, then the applicant will still need to go through NC DOT's permitting process. Um, there are certain separation and location requirements away from residentially zoned property. Um, we, uh, staff has determined that these requirements have been met. We can look specifically at that, uh, as well. Um, there are general lighting requirements that the billboard is subject to. You'll also see some conditions, um, in terms of the lighting intensity and the changeable copy as well. There is landscaping proposed around the base of the billboard, um, as required by the ordinance. That consists of five alary holly plants. Uh, there is a note on the plan that no, um, undo undercutting of existing vegetation will be, um, will be done. And that is, uh, meeting the requirements of the special use, um, provisions. The immediate area is, um, primarily commercial and institutional uses. There are some, um, industrial uses as well in the I two district. And, um, permitting of the billboard would be exclusive of permitting for any other signs allowed in the I two zoning district. If there were to be a, um, a, a use other than the billboard, a, a structure that would be permitted, um, by, by staff review, then, uh, that would still allow for any additional, additional signage. If you look at the, um, the property, it is just right, uh, that very small sliver of property just to the, to the, um, right or the east of the railroad track along South Fayetteville Street, right in the center of the map, along South Fayetteville Street. The purple area is zoned industrial. Um, just one significant point of that is, uh, one of the requirements is that there be at least a, a thousand feet of contin- continuous industrially zoned property. So you see that that is met with this, um, site plan. There's also the separation from the, um, residential, um, zoning as required. That large, um, yellow parcel that has, um, um, residential zoning, that is actually the city golf course. And then you have some other residential property if you go on the opposite side of, um, South Fayetteville Street, off of the, uh, off of that quarter. Um, so, uh, there have been signs posted on the property on, um, September eighteenth. Notification letters were mailed by staff to all the adjoining property owners that you see here on, um, September twenty-third. Um, in terms of, uh, the topography, it's a fairly level, uh, piece of property. There is also city, or there, there are city utilities, uh, that run along, um, South Fayetteville Street, um, to the site. So this shows you the aerial map of the, the property. Um, and this, um, is just to the south of Country Club, uh, Drive. So the National Guard Armory is just to the north of this to kind of give you, uh, that as a landmark. So, um, if you're looking to the south on two twenty Business South here, you see, um, the property from, from that side. Um, Country Club, uh, Drive is off to the right. You see about where the billboard would be, would be placed. Um, on the next photo, you see a, a little bit clearer of a view of the existing billboard. Um, the applicant did provide these dimensions. So, um, the existing billboard is eighteen and a half feet in height, um, and then twenty-two feet, um, uh, in width, uh, and eleven feet in, um, um, in the other dimension, um, in terms of the height of the actual billboard. It's eighteen and a half feet above, above grade for the existing. The proposed billboard would be, uh, twenty-two feet in height. So slightly taller, um, than what's, what's there now. This is looking south on two twenty Business South, um, away from the subject property. Um, this is an oblique, um, photo, just kind of showing you some of the surrounding properties in the area. Um, on the site plan, you see where the new billboard is going, about a hundred and sixty feet to the north. Um, this shows you a closer view of the, uh, site plan and the billboard and the shrubs that are around the base of, of that. Um, this shows you a dimension of the, um, of the billboard, twelve by twenty-four, and then the height above grade. And then you see the billboard below grade. And then from overhead, if you're looking at this on the, um, right-hand side. And, and staff has looked at the design of the billboard and that does comply with, um, with the special use permit requirements. And I do have those there. Um, I won't read all of those, but if there are questions, I'll be happy to, uh, to, uh, address any of those. But they are there on, on your screens and in your, uh, your reports.
Those are the, the conditions?
Uh, those are just the general ordinance requirements. So we, and, and we did review, um, uh, all of those and ensure that, uh, that, that the site plan, uh, met those requirements. Um, so on, on the, uh, conditions, um, we, we do have several of those. Um, so condition A is just stating that, um, the use will be a billboard and it gives the technical term of signs, off-premise billboard and poster panel, et cetera. That's basic, based on the classification and the, the zoning ordinance. Um, but it would permit any other use allowed by right in the I two district, but subject to meeting all ordinance requirements. Um, item, uh, B is stating that, uh, before a zoning permit is issued, um, the final decision document by city council, if council finds in favor of the request, uh, would need to be approved. And then item C is, um, the, um, prior to the issuance of a building permit for the new billboard, the existing billboard shall be removed in compliance with building permitting requirements, which could include a demolition permit for the existing billboard. That is to ensure that, uh, there won't be two billboards on the property. And so, um, item D, um, just requires coordination with the Department of Transportation for their permitting, as I mentioned earlier. Um, item E is, um, just addressing that on the site plan, if you look on the, um, the southern side where the property boundary is, there is an adjoining, uh, use. The driveway is shown as encroaching into the subject property. Um, so condition E is, is basically saying that, um, approval of this special use permit isn't really, uh, offering any finding, conclusion or order on, on to the legal status of that encroachment. So just stating that that is not part of this review. Just acknowledging that that's, that that is there. Um, item F, um, items F and G are, um, dealing with the, um, the, the delay of how often the messages can change on the billboard and then the light intensity with the five thousand nits during the day and the five hundred nits between dusk and dawn. You saw that on a previous, uh, request tonight. So that is being consistent with the other, uh, the standards and the ordinance that deal with, with, um, with lighting and, and safety in terms of the, the changeable copy. Um, so, um, the applicant will need to present, um, evidence, um, supporting, um, each of the four findings of fact. And, um, uh, before, uh, before getting to that, I'll be glad to take any questions.
John, can you tell me how far this proposed sign is from Telephone Avenue?
Um, let me see. It would appear that it is, I, I don't have an exact measurement, but it would appear it's approximately a hundred feet, just from kind of looking at the site plan. Any other, any other questions?
Any questions from council? Mr. Evans? Hearing done. I think our next step is to receive, uh, uh, information and testimony on the project and the four-step test that I'm looking forward to.
Good evening, Mayor Pro Tem and esteemed members of council. My name is Lydija Matthews. Office address one oh one, South Tryon Street in Fayetteville. I'm a land use attorney with, um, Fox Rothschild and I sit in the Charlotte office. But I have been given the nickname tonight Billboard Lady and I kind of like it. I have a couple of documents for you. I will keep them there and my thoughts and prayers, but the last time I was here, he kind of scolded me. I gave you guys binders and he was like, shake this back for me. So I've consolidated.
Well, there's a new sheriff in town. You be all right.
I won't tell him he said that.
I will. I don't.
Okay.
Thank you.
I'll share.
Thank you, Mayor.
I have a clicker or just hit the laptop? I can do that.
Okay. Tele Billboards is no stranger to this council or to this community. It's a local business supporting local businesses. Uh, many of the billboards that you see around the city, um, again, promote or, or advertise for local businesses in Ashboro. I've sat in a couple of your meetings and here are all the amazing things that have happened. And there's a lot of, uh, historical knowledge or institutional knowledge on this, um, council. So to hear all the, all the, um, things that have been going on and how you guys have, uh, progressed the city, um, this is just a part of it, right? Um, folks want to, to, um, folks want to advertise here and they want the business here. So I think that this is a good sign and a testimony of the work that you all have done. Um, you heard, um, about the sign. It's a twelve by twenty-four double face sign. Um, here I have a thirty-five foot maximum height. That is incorrect. That is the maximum allowed under the ordinance for, um, advertising, advertising, um, signs. But this, uh, site plan indicates twenty-two, um, feet height. We heard earlier today that static, um, boards are kind of boring. So we have proposed a static, um, advertising sign. However, um, in the future, should business needs, um, say that it's a good idea, this plan, um, contemplates future digital, um, use. And so there are some conditions specific to that digital use if it should happen. And again, this is another monopole. I might have been better off just using the quicker. All right, here's that four-part test, Mayor Pro Tem. Signs are kind of par for the course. Again, there are some signs that will never come before this city council, but be, because of the nature of the sign, it is an off, um, off-premise sign. Again, this is a vacant lot, so there is nothing to promote or signage to support, uh, building. This would be straight up what you know, um, or what you think about, um, when you think about billboards. Um, and so it is subject to those additional requirements of the ordinance and there's no gray area here. So, um, we are held to the strictest of the regulations and to those NC DOT regulations should you approve the SUP. Um, so, uh, we'll abbreviate the four factors. The first one is related to public health or safety, um, that all required conditions and specifications are met. Um, you'll hear somebody who is more qualified to talk about, uh, property values today. Um, an appraiser by the name of Mr. Brian Crowder. Um, and he'll tell you about the, the impact or lack thereof of this sign. Um, and then lastly, whether it is in harmony with the area and general conformity with the LDP. And upon meeting, uh, meeting these standards with the requisite proof, um, our applicant is entitled to the SUP, but we're happy to answer any questions and you help me to that and make sure that I meet them. So you've seen these areas before and, um, your staff report talks about, uh, the adjacent uses again is pretty much surrounded by institutional and businesses. This is a business corridor, um, but the site itself is zoned for industrial use. And of course, as you'll see in a couple of slides, um, the businesses around have their own signage. So the off, um, premise signage, um, kind of blends in with the, the activity in the area. So this turns the site plan that you have, uh, kind of ninety degrees, uh, clockwise. Um, the location of the, um, proposed sign is highlighted in yellow. And, um, the old sign is located to, I guess, this would be if you were looking at it properly, the south of the site. And the west on your screen. The staff report and you heard earlier today that, um, the plan, the site plan meets all the regulations of the UDO, including those fifteen additional ones, uh, for off-premise signs and the subparts thereof. Um, some of those are indicated on this site plan. The landscaping, um, the buffers over three hundred feet, um, away from the closest residential site. Um, it has the frontage, so that is shown, um, in a little bit more detail in the justification statement that I pass out to you and then on the site plan as well. And I had in my notes to say, um, Councilmember Burke, before you ask, if it means anything to you, to the extent there is a digital billboard, the brightness will not exceed those five thousand nits during the daytime and then ten, just ten percent of that, the five hundred nits from dusk to dawn. Similar photos, so the left is again the approximate location of the sign. So in a sense, this is kind of infill. Um, this is along your business corridor. Um, and an otherwise vacant site will have a newly constructed, um, advertising sign here again, subject to the NC DOT standards. Conversely, on your right-hand side, you see the, um, sign that has been there. It's our understanding that that sign was built in the sixties, um, using repurposed telephone lines. Um, you know, we hear the term grandfathered in, so that, um, that sign would not have been, um, subject to the NC DOT standards or even the current Ashboro standards for off-premise signs. And again, you heard that the new sign is comparable in size to this. It will again just meet those regulations that are in place for safety, um, and the public welfare. And now I am going to call up Mr. Brian Crowder. He is a certified appraiser. He will, um, discuss his credentials and then we'll take a pause. I'll ask you a couple of questions, um, handle some logistics and then he'll tell you about, um, what he looked at for the site and the results of his analysis. You also have the analysis in your materials. And, um, within those materials are Mr. Crowder's, um, credentials, his CV and resume. So without further ado, I'll call him up.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Pro Tem and council members. I'll start off by giving a little bit of my background and credentials. My name is Brian Crowder. I'm a North Carolina state certified general appraiser. That means I'm licensed to appraise any type of real estate in the state of North Carolina. Um, I've been appraising for over seventeen years, all with Hilton Crowder and Associates based in High Point. Uh, I began, began my appraisal career immediately after graduating from North Carolina State University. Over the course of my career, I've appraised and consulted on a wide variety of property types, including single-family residential, multifamily vacant land, commercial, industrial, office and institutional properties. I hold both the MAI and SRA designations from the Appraisal Institute, which is the largest and most recognized professional appraisal organization in the world. These designations represent extensive education, testing and experience requirements to earn them. I was required to have a college degree. I had to take numerous advanced courses, each of which were a week long and included with a proctored exam. I had to pass a sixteen-hour comprehensive examination divided into four, four-hour modules. I had to complete more than forty-five hundred hours of specialized appraisal experience, including a detailed peer review of three randomly selected appraisals and had to complete a demonstration of knowledge report, uh, similar to a thesis paper over two hundred and fifty pages long, requiring a detailed analysis, full market support for every adjustment I made and a formal grading and review process. Um, the MAI and SRA designations have long been recognized by courts of law, government agencies, financial institutions and investors as a mark of excellence in the real estate valuation analysis field, uh, not just nationally, but worldwide. In addition to maintaining my state certification, I regularly attend continuing education and professional seminars to stay current on industry standard, needs, trends and standards. I've also served in leadership roles within the North Carolina chapter of the Appraisal Institute. I have been a regional representative, a member of the board of directors, uh, chair of the Real Estate Valuation Conference, which provides continued education to appraisers all across the state of North Carolina. Um, I currently serve as an executive officer for the North Carolina chapter of the Appraisal Institute. As treasurer this year, will serve as vice president in twenty twenty-six, president-elect in twenty twenty-seven and president in twenty twenty-eight. And I was also honored to be recognized by Tribe Business Journal's twenty twenty-four class of forty leaders under forty.
With that, Mayor Pro Tem, I would ask that Mr. Crowder be tendered as an expert in real estate appraisal, qualified to, um, speak to market impact, uh, ma- analysis, excuse me, and property values.
Went to Tennessee State, didn't he? I got, I got you. Two nose.
What are you going to do?
Tiger, not, it's just me and you, buddy. Catamount, pirates.
I wrote a check.
Mountaineers. You got a full range here. Go ahead.
Thank you. Thank you all so much. I was asked to complete a market impact study for the proposed advertising sign. Uh, this is not an appraisal. I was not, uh, asked to provide a specific market value for the property. Instead, this was a consulting assignment to evaluate whether the proposed advertising sign would have a measurable impact on adjoining or budding properties and if any such impact would be constitute as a substantial injury. I was also asked to determine whether the proposed advertising sign would be in harmony with the area in which it's to be located. To reach my conclusions, I applied methodologies that are consistent with the regulations of the appraisal standards boards and confer, conformed to the uniform standards of professional appraisal practice or known as USPAP is the acronym. Uh, these are the same standards relied upon upon every financial institution recognized by state and federal courts throughout the country. They're updated every two years to reflect best practices in valuation and analysis. Uh, using these standards, I performed analyses consistent with accepted appraisal techniques. Specifically, one of the ones I used is paired sales analysis or what's commonly referred to as comparable sales. For each comparable advertising sign or external factor that I looked at, I identified nearby properties that had recently sold and compared them with similar properties within the same general market area, but far enough away to avoid any influence from that advertising sign or external factor. In appraisal terminology, a negative external factor that can diminish property value is called an external obsolescence, a form of depreciation caused by outside factors that cannot be cured by the landowner or a tenant because it's external, not on their property. It can be traffic, odor, noise, environmental conditions or visual impacts. Because residential properties tend to sell more frequently or are generally more sensitive to these external factors than a commercial property and industrial property may be, my analysis focused primarily on residential properties because those would be the ones that are most sensitive to these external factors. The data that I analyzed, um, clearly shows how buyers and investors actually spend their money in, in the marketplace. When I'm looking at data and making adjustments, I don't just think this is what it's going to be. You have to actually have data to do it and to support it. It's not a number you pull out of air, you calculate it, you look at it. That's, that's the pair of sales analysis that I was talking about. These findings are consistent with my experience in numerous appraisals that I've completed near similar other advertising signs or external factors. Uh, based on the objective data that I analyzed, it is my professional opinion that the proposed advertising sign that we looked at tonight, in accordance with the submitted plans and specifications, as well as the rules and restrictions that must follow, will not substantially injure the value of adjoining or budding properties and will be in harmony with the surrounding area. In fact, the evidence demonstrates that there would be no measurable injury or depreciation at all. While my study focused on mostly residential properties, it's worth noting that commercial and industrial properties, like I already said, would be less sensitive to this external obsolescence. Therefore, my finding of no adverse impact extends to these properties as well, which is immediately surrounding this, um, proposed advertising sign. In addition, it is my professional opinion that the proposed advertising sign will be in harmony with the area. In fact, there are multiple different types of signage located along subjects thoroughfare. You're taking away one billboard advertising found and adding another one, so it's not really changing the amount of signage in that vicinity. So further showing that is in harmony of the area and I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
There's one everything down there, so you are. Anybody got any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Crowder.
All right, just a few more photos. This is, um, looking from the south of the site. Um, and I have these pictures. I won't hide my hand to show that there are, um, various, um, types of signage in terms of height, freestanding. You can't really see signage on buildings, but, um, there are here. And then this is looking to the north of the site. So again, that four-part test, public health or safety. Um, there are none of the, the usual suspects you think of when, um, you think of nuisances that come with the development. We're not going to have an increase of traffic here. There's no odor, um, to the extent that lights may be an issue. Those, there's a condition offered to limit those impacts and it will be regulated by, um, the UDO as well as NC DOT. Um, and if anything, um, we're removing a sign that is non-compliant and adding, uh, replacing it with one that meets all the codes, um, and regulations that are in place again for public health and safety. Again, you heard today, um, and it's in your staff report, that the sign meets all required conditions and specifications, again, including those twenty-some additional, um, regulations that are, um, required to be met for off-premise signage that is not usually, um, um, applicable to signage for on-premise, um, developments. The use will not substantially injure the value of adjoining or budding property. You have the market impact analysis and you heard Mr. Crowder's testimony. Um, again, this is also kind of just a common sense. There's a sign there, we're removing that sign and we're replacing it with another sign. So, you know, we're not changing the use of the land in any way. And also, lastly, harmony with the area. Uh, you saw some pictures. This is again a business corridor, um, general conformity with the LDP. This is in a primary growth area where commercial and, um, commercial activity and business development is encouraged. And then I'll go back up just for Mayor Pro Tem and say that because of that reason, um, it is, is in this business corridor. Ashboro, um, has, um, lots of, uh, aggressive or aspirational goals when it comes to business. And so you need to be able need to be able to promote those businesses. And so for that, I would say that the sign is a public necessity. These are our four factors. I believe that we have met those with the requisite burden, which is competent, substantial evidence. If you don't think so, I'm happy to answer some questions and figure it out and try to prove it to you before the close of the public hearing. I will ask for a couple of housekeeping matters, and that is that the presentation, along with the justification statement and the market impact analysis that you have be entered into evidence, into the record. And I'd also ask that staff's report and presentation likewise be entered into evidence.
Let's have one question.
Yes, sir.
You've addressed the public safety issue as it relates to the lighting being restricted to the conditions that are generally imposed in our ordinance. And then it's going to be a static sign for now, but there's a potential that it's going to be electronic.
That's right.
And I just want to see what you have to say about the proximity of a potential electric sign, albeit the lighting nits being appropriate to telephone avenues. Is there any indication that traffic may be affected at that intersection shortly south of that location?
There is no indication at this point, but again, if you all give us the green light to proceed by approving a special use permit, then just like the rezonings that you heard before, they'll go through a more technical review with NCGOT. And that, those are things that are definitely in their purview, and if the sign needs to be moved, you know, further north or south, according to their suggestion, it certainly will be.
All right, thank you.
Any further questions?
You're incredibly thorough. You always are.
Thank you. Tell Tom Terrell. Everybody who knows Tom, tell him.
She's a public necessity.
And give her a raise.
Well, at least you got a lot of billable hours tonight.
HR said if I close my eyes and I'm sleeping, he's going to tell Tom, so I can't bill for those. But it's always a pleasure to be here in Ashboro. Y'all have a lot of exciting things to, a lot of exciting things to go on, and I like to hear about them. I don't stay after my hearings because I do charge by the hour, so I got to get out of here, but it's always a pleasure to be here.
We're getting more hotels, if you need.
Or where's the bar? Maybe they're still doing the overnight special with it.
We probably won't get to see it tonight. Anything else of a serious nature? All right. Thank you very much for your presentation.
Thank you.
Is there any other testimony to be given on this, anyone wishing to speak?
Mr. Mayor Protem, based on the presentation, I think that the applicant has met the four-part test. I move you approved.
Motion by Mr. Bell, second.
Second.
Second by Ms. Heath. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. We're good. Get the stopwatch. Okay. Now. We're off into the exciting world of propane and propane accessories.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Thank you. Where Bobby?
And Mr. Mayor Protem, we do have two witnesses who are already taking the oath. And if you wouldn't mind just reminding, Mr. Evans, he's still under oath.
Just tell us no lie, though. You're under oath.
Absolutely.
Okay.
Yes, sir. So this request is for a special use permit for property located on the western side of New Century Drive, also on I-7374. It is a portion of a Randolph County parcel identification number that's involved. And it is for combustible liquid storage above ground, over a hundred thousand gallons. The applicant in this case is Mr. H.R. Gallimore, and the zoning of the property is I-2 general industrial. It is part of one parcel identification number. There was recently a plat, a minor subdivision plat that was recorded with the 1.492 acres, but there has been no new parcel identification number assigned. That's why it's showing just a portion of that parcel identification number. The property is undeveloped. There was a concrete pad added with a previous industrial request, but that is no longer, no longer active. And so the application specifically indicates that distribution propane tanks are requested, and they can tell you more detail about, about those. But for just a summary, there are a total of 102,420 gallons among three different tanks that have 34,140 gallons each. They do comply with the required setback requirements that are on your list of special use requirements, and they are outside of a thirty-foot city water and sanitary sewer easement, as required. The, the adjoining properties to the north and to the south on New Century Drive are both industrially zoned, therefore there is no buffering required on the sides of the property. However, there is street yard landscaping on the front along New Century Drive that's shown on the site plan. That's one tree per twenty linear feet. There is also an overlay district requirement along I-7374. That includes the retention of some significant existing vegetation that exists on the site. You'll see that in some photos as well. The site plan indicates there are no employees regularly located on site. Therefore, there is not paved off-street parking required. There is the, the access drive to get to the propane tanks for service and maintenance needs and things of, things of that nature. So the area has industrial professional services with the Trillium or Sand Hills facility to the south, and also governmental uses with the county facilities that are along New Century Drive. The property is accessible to the interstate, so you'll see on that list of special use criteria, it requires that the, the access to the property not be through any residentially zone property. So it does go to the interstate via New Century Drive to a signalized intersection with McDowell Road, and then it's right at the interstate interchange. The applicant will need to attest to the National Fire Protection Association standards being met, dealing with fire safety for the propane facility. So the, the overview map shows you the property. It's right in the center of the, of the map along New Century Drive. The Pentagon-shaped property there, purple. And this is parcel A1. There was a sign posted on the property September eighteenth. Notification letters were mailed to the adjoining property owners that you see on that list on September the twenty-third. In terms of topography, it does drop as you go from New Century Drive. And there you can also see the, the water and sewer main that was mentioned. So here's an aerial photo of the subject property and some of the surrounding properties. This is an oblique map that shows you the, the subject property and some of the surrounding properties. This is a photo taken from the, the property where the for sale sign is. I will also note there's a zoning sign there along New Century Drive. This is looking in the opposite direction from the south along New Century Drive into the property. This is looking further south on New Century Drive. You see the Trillium office to the right. This is looking, actually, that should say looking to the north on New Century Drive. That is looking towards the Randolph County Office Building, and you see the Randolph County Jail on your, your right. This is a photo courtesy of Street, Google Street View from 2024. I will note that nothing significant has changed in terms of the vegetation along the interstate, so that gives you a view of, of the, of the wooded area. Some of that vegetation is in the right of way, but some of it is within the property. And so it does meet the overlay district requirements. And so on the site plan, you'll see the driveway to access the property. There's a gravel area that's shown on the property, and then the three propane tanks. You'll see the form, the concrete pad that I mentioned, and it's on your aerial photos earlier in the presentation as, as well. And you see the buffering along, or the street yard landscaping, rather, along New Century Drive. Just, so there's less than an acre that's disturbed on this site, so that's why you don't see a condition about erosion control permitting, which would not be required because of there not being an acre of disturbance. And then item, or number eight, just notes the size of the tanks being third, three feet off the side of the tank, a fourteen-inch pier, and four, excuse me, eleven feet in diameter and fifty feet in length in terms of the, of the measurements. And the applicant may, if there's questions about that, they may be able to speak to those as well. So just looking at the requirements, staff has reviewed these through our different departments and has determined that all of these requirements have been, have been met. We can cover those if there are any questions. And so we, we do just have two conditions on this request. The first is that any land use activities that do not require a special use permit would be permitted by staff review, as long as they meet the requirements of the zoning ordinance. And then item B goes over the items that are necessary before a zoning permit is issued, and that includes any driveway permitting. With this being a city-maintained street, if there's any driveway permitting, that would require a city driveway permit. And then item two is that the final decision document be approved by council, if, if council finds in favor of the applicant. So again, those are the four findings the applicant will need to, to satisfactorily address, and I'll be glad to answer any questions as well.
Any questions for Mr. Evans? Okay. Thank you. Thank you for that presentation. At this time, I would request to hear from the applicant about the project. Someone here speak in favor of it.
Good evening. I'm Tim Rhodes with Holzman Corporation, which, whom is making this request. At this time, I would like to call on H.R. Gallimore, as an expert witness in this matter.
Very good. Mr. Gallimore.
Good evening. Do I need to sign in again, gentlemen?
I'll go.
And lady, pardon me. Okay. If I, if I miss one of the findings of fact, you just, Walker, I have no doubt you'll correct me, and Clark will if you don't. Let me tell you a little bit about this. This request, and this is not a factor in your decision, is, but it is a new company coming to town, Holzman Corporation. They're out of Virginia. They're also throughout, already some locations in North Carolina. They do convenience stores. They, they also are buying the lot next to this. We actually cut it two pieces. They offload, distribute ice to the convenience stores around the Carolinas. Y'all see those double-door things, full ice. They do that. They've been around since 1972. I think they're, they're growing, and they like our community, as does everyone else. And so do I. So let me get started. This, this property, we wouldn't be here except all combustible fuels require a special use permit. It is zoned correctly. Done a little research. If safety generally comes up, I've done this before. If it does, I've got some facts that we can cover if anybody's got any questions about the safety side of it. So I'm going to try to cover the four facts here if I can. It serves the need of the public. I think anytime we have heating, utilities, and fuel, it's important to have those and have them in quantity and to have them where they help with the, pardon me, help with the competition of pricing. I think that's always serves our needs well. I don't see, and I fail to mention, Jeff usually wants this. I am a certified commercial investment member, CCIM, and an SIOR. Both are commercial certifications. This, this entire New Century was, was designed and built for industrial use several years ago. It already has one, one user who's in energy, and that's Duke Energy at the very end of this, actually Veterans Loop. There's several other energy folks in the sector, such as Briles Oil, which has propane tanks as well. And we also have Randolph Electric was right across the interstate. So there's a good bit of energy in the sector, and for a lot of reasons. It's near the interstate. It serves the public well to be that available. I think it meets the goals of the land development plan from the standpoint of being an industrial use. That's what this is zoned. I think it's in harmony. If you, I know y'all have ever driven the sector. It's got various uses in there, and I think this is also in harmony. And I don't think it proposes any danger to the community, but we'll discuss that if you guys need a refresher on that.
Any further questions for Mr. Gallimore? I'll, if you touched on them.
If you need, if you need any questions, I'm here. Thank you for your time and attention.
Do we have any further testimony from the applicant for the project? Is there anyone else in the audience here to speak about the project? Yay or no? Hearing none, then I'll close the public hearing and ask for any commentary or a motion?
Mr. Mayor Protem, I think we need to address the conditions that were proposed.
Oh, yeah, if they're acceptable to the client.
Yes.
Yes, excuse me. Thank you.
I'm glad you brought that up. John, you had mentioned a moment ago, I think it was a condo, it gives oversight, the number of tanks and the sizes that are going to be here. I think one said two thirty thousand tanks, and one part of your, your presentation said three. You want to back that up and double-check? It's my understanding there's going to be three thirty thousand tanks here.
The drawing says three thirty-four thousand one hundred and forty gallons each tanks.
Yeah, just wanted to be clear on that because one of your presentations said two, and since we're under quasi, it's probably good to get that squared away.
Top down one hundred and two thousand four.
Yeah, so, and the request was just over a hundred thousand, right?
Yeah. That's, that's what it says here.
Number two, yep, thirty-four thousand one hundred and forty, and then there's three tanks.
Three tanks, too. Just wanted to clarify that since it's judicial. Clark, your question is, is the applicant okay with all the conditions?
Yes.
To get back to that. Yeah, I think so.
I'll defer to Tim on that. Do you see any conditions? It's not satisfactory?
So the answer's yes.
I think it, it may be on the site plan that that error was.
Yeah, there was, there was a misquote there somewhere. I just wanted to clarify that since we're under quasi.
Right, right. That's right. Okay, just one to clarify.
Okay, we covered all the i's and t's there. We've got three, three tanks. The conditions are agreeable. Do we have a motion?
Mr. Mayor Protem, I think having met the four-part test, we approve the request subject to the proposed conditions of staff minimal to the applicant.
Have motion, Mr. Bell, second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Burks. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
The motion carries. Okay, now, we're back to our puzzle. Let's see. So I'm actually opening a second public hearing?
That is correct.
For item 8A, the city engineer, Michael Leonard, will present initial testimony relative to annexation request.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Protem. So this is for the consideration of petition received for K-Square Gold Hill LLC requesting satellite annexation of approximately, or of seventy-four point four nine five acres between Windsor Trail and Gold Hill Road. The item was presented the September fourth. Where's the? September fourth, City Council meeting. This is the property in question. The resolution has been properly advertised, and now's the time for the public hearing.
At this time, we'll open the public hearing, and we'll hear any testimony from the members of the public relative to the singular issue of whether or not this property would be annexed or not. And I suppose that is open to city residents and non-city residents?
As is advertised, it's open to anyone who claims to own property in the area for which annexation has been requested.
Okay, so city property.
And anyone resident or owning property in the municipal corporation. And they're addressing the issues of, have all the people who have an interest in the property signed the petition? And the general. property signed the petition, and the general desirability of the annexation.
Okay, you've heard the qualifications to speak. Is, if anyone is here bearing those and wishes to address the council, please come forward.
Yeah, I'm John Cowan, I live on Snowden Court, and I promise not to repeat what I said earlier, but I do have separate notes in regard to annexation.
Okay.
I recall in two thousand eight, when Forbes Magazine listed Ashford City as a dying city.
Yeah, we were especially proud of that.
Well, the city leadership stood up, and eight years later attained All-America City status. Ashford's changed a lot since then, Ashford's changed a lot for the better since I moved here first time in nineteen eighty-eight, although there may be some people here who missed the cruising on Fayetteville Street. In my opinion, the city of Ashford is expanding too quickly, at the expense of long-term, long-time residents and neighborhoods. While there will continue to be a need for more housing in Randolph County, it should not mean the city expands its limits to every single person or entity making such a request. Can Ashford continue to rapidly expand its boundaries, given its already stressed infrastructure? For example, earlier this summer, I received a letter from the city about the problems with HAA five and the drinking water. Ironically, today, I received another letter from the city about lead and some of the connections with the city water. It was a notice of lead status, excuse me, it is a notice of lead status unknown water service line. How long will it take the city to perform a service line identification and fix the issue? Adding more water customers is not going to speed up that process.
Just to clarify that for just a moment. That survey is required of the city, but it pertains to the homeowner's line from the meeting, from the meter to the house. And then, once it's identified, then while we have no way, they, they will ask us to try to control lead and copper content in our water to end up with a acceptable level coming out of your tap, which is a feat in physics in and of itself. So, there probably might be a program to replace some people's service lines under some program, but, but it's not the city's lines that's in question.
So, it's not the public side?
That's correct.
Okay, my apologies.
And, and the, the THHM, HAA five's a disinfecting product rule that's taken seasonally, because the lake's turnover twice a year, and it has an effect on the chlorine, the way the water mixes is the chlorine that we use for disinfecting. So, anyway, moving right on.
Randolph County has room, Randolph County has room for housing and growth, let the county deal with it, and the interim Ashborough should focus on what sits within its current city limits. Again, as I said in my earlier comments, I truly believe that this sort of decision should be left to the next city council, given the number of new members that will be sitting in front of us next time, let alone the fact that one of our members is missing this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, and I'm just proud of our water system, I'm sorry. Is there anyone else? And I know you live in Seattle.
You should've known it.
I knew, I know, I do know it.
Do we have to sign?
And you're proud of your garbage service, too.
We absolutely are, and it's supposed to be free when they took us in.
Yeah, I got the same problem at my house.
Yeah, okay. I would just like to say, well, what, one of the things is, I understand the city of Ashborough is, that, you know, they, in other words, you're saying that from the city, the city portion of the water line is okay. Okay, but it does say the city of Ashborough is continuing service line identification. If your service line is found to contain lead or galvanized piping requirement replacement, you'll receive a separate notice. So, in other words, even though the city is, you know, your portion is, is correct, they're still have, they're still in the process of doing, of doing the, a survey.
The current requirement by the EPA, and this was a phased-in survey, it started with our materials, and, and then we, any old lines that we had have been replaced and upgraded. The next phase was to identify copper, copper lines that have lead solder, or galvanized, or pipe lines going into the house, then there's also faucets within the house, that, depending on the brass fittings, they could have lead within them too. And in odd turn of events, the EPA requires us to be responsible for the water that comes out of your faucet, even though we have zero control of what goes on from that water, from that meter to your glass. So, what's we, and identify those, there are tier one, two, three, and four sites that have to be identified, and we classify each, and then we report that to the EPA through the state's agency. And then, then we have, then we will address those individually based on the next mandate by the EPA, which we hope will come with some funding, 'cause there's really, once we send you water with no lead and copper in it, when it gets to your house, it gets contaminated, but not yours personally. But it gets to a house, I'm not sure how we can reduce it further, but, but there are other municipalities that do have higher concentrations, and when it gets to the house, it exceeds the safe limit, so. And that's the reason, I don't know if you've ever participated in it or not, but I can sure get you involved in it. We have to have sample excites, a minimum number of them throughout the city, and in fact, my house is one of them, 'cause I'm down the lower end of South Ashborough. And we typically have to have a mix of older homes and newer homes, and we'll test your water for lead and copper and tell you exactly where you stand.
And then we'll, and they're gonna give us financing options.
We, well, you know, I can't imagine anything coming down from Raleigh or Washington D.C. that they didn't send us money to do it with, but that's a possibility.
Okay, well, the next, the next thing that I, I actually wanted to, to mention, or, or a question.
Sure.
Okay, it's been said at this, in, earlier in the meeting, that it's easier to annex somebody than to de-annex him. Am I, I think that was, that was what we said earlier.
It's two different bodies, yes, you're right.
Okay, it's a lot easier, you know, you can, you can say tonight, this is great, we're gonna annex him. And then, it's, it's a lot harder to, to, to reverse that decision later on.
Takes an action by a different governing body.
Absolutely.
That's a fact.
So, what I'm, what I'm saying is, if you vote to annex it, annex this tonight, then we're pretty much assured that it's gonna go through, because you certainly wouldn't want to annex this, and it not be able to be done, and then the developer is left with property that is
Right.
Paying city taxes, and, and he's not gonna be able to do with it what he thought he was gonna be able to do, right?
Let me give you a good example of, of how, how that can work, you know, 'cause what you said is, is right.
Yeah.
And that's the gamble he's a taking, that's his business.
But y'all not taking the gamble.
No, we're not, we don't have gambling, yes. The, when, we had to do the zoning on the Walmart out here on sixty-four. The, the first hundred feet of property, I believe it was at that time, wasn't very deep, was zoned commercial, but that's a great old big place. I mean, just the building's five acres. And they, their property that they were wanting to obtain and zone went all the way back to the residence at, in Wood Road. The first step in a request like that was, is for a conditional use zoning, is you gotta place the property in the zone, and then you address the conditions, so, and it's a two-vote process, so we, so, this is what I know about putting something, do step A first, and then step B. I know for a fact in my mind that, say, three hundred feet deep off of Highway sixty-four can, can be a commercial, should be commercial. Then the rest of it, I have to ask, with certain conditions, do I believe this could work here? And then we start working on the conditions, but to say that there's no number of conditions that that couldn't work, that's a big stretch. Now, but they, they take the risk, if we put it in there first, and then they don't like the conditions, then they're stuck. You know, they're, they're in the city limits, and they have no project that they want to do, but that's a risk he's evidently willing to take.
Because he knows that it's probably gonna go through.
It's up to him to figure that out, hey, I've been in Las Vegas.
I'm just, I'm just saying, I would hope, I would hope that, that before you do vote, I mean, annexing it is a serious step.
It's a serious step.
Absolutely, a serious step.
And it does require a certain amount of effort to undo it, should everything go straight.
So, what I am asking is that, before you just say, I think this is good, we're gonna annex it, I would actually like for you to, very, very serious, I don't know if every one of you have read every word of that, what is it, a hundred and twenty-two pages of what's on the packet, you know, for, for tonight. Now, not all hundred and twenty-two in us, but a big portion of it.
It's exceptionally boring, and I'd take a bet Kelly has.
Well, I'm just saying, I don't know if all y'all's read every word of it. I have, not that I can remember every word of it.
Yeah.
But it's a lot, I mean, it really is a lot.
And a lot of it's the same thing we see over and over again, but it is a lot.
And I, and I don't know how long you've had, you know, I don't know, I mean, this thing has been going, this is the fourth meeting we, we, we have attended, Fountain Planting Board and this, and I don't, I don't know how long, you, it's been changed, and changed, and changed, and changed.
It'll be changing.
Yeah, I mean, by now, and we appreciate some of the changes, but I'm just saying that it's a lot, and I just hope that whatever your vote is, that you will have considered everything, especially the, the water, John, the water report from
Stormwater?
Michael Roni, Ron? You, you, something presented about
That's Michael Leonard, that's Michael Roni.
No, no.
We name everybody Michael.
But I mean, the, the guy that's in charge of water.
That's him.
Michael Roni. Are you Michael Roni? Okay, so, but, I mean, that, that, you know, there, there's a pretty big section, you know, on that. I'm just saying, please don't take it lightly, and I'm, I'm not suggesting that you're gonna take it lightly, but I'm just asking you to consider it very, very carefully, before you decide to make that very serious step that you're gonna annex the property.
I will share this with you, the, and this been pointed out, the drawings that we're looking at, there is, there is, we're seeing a pretty two-dimensional picture. Sorry, tell me your name again.
Jonathan Dillian.
Jonathan Dillian, yeah, it, it, basically, he's right about the grades and considerations like that, and, and with this configuration, that's the lots that they wrote down. When they do the erosion control plan and get the final number of erosion control devices and things that they need, and then they get the grades of the road exactly just right, and get their grading permit, and hear from DOT, it's likely the number of lots and layout could vary some. They won't get any more, I'll promise you that, but it's highly likely, they'll, they'll lose a few in the design process as some of the nuances get finalized, if, if it were to go forward. So, the regulatory agencies that go over all that, they, they do address those items and take them very, very generously, whether this project or any other, and, and we'd like to think we give it a good look, and sometimes you miss a thing or two, but you're, you're insightful to share that with.
Thank you so much, appreciate your time.
Thank you.
I know, I know, man, this is something else. I don't know how many of your meetings go on this long, but I do appreciate your work for the city.
A handful do, yes ma'am.
Don't y'all feel sorry for me?
And sadly, we're, we're, we're on salary, we don't get overtime. Mr. Dillian?
Just a couple of questions, am I not allowed to speak, or can I speak until people figure out whether or not I live in a city or not? There's no one that comes on Windsor Trail knows who doesn't, who doesn't?
You would not have standing
Okay.
On this project, unless you're the property owner of this particular parcel, or you in, live in the city limits.
Okay, thank you.
So, are, are we assuming that's the law? That, that he can't speak because he's not in the city?
It's the annexation, you have to be either in the city.
On, on this item, now, he can speak all he wants to on the subdivision item, which is essentially the same thing.
It's all based off of the annexations occurring, and it's outside the city, the only things being looked at are the property itself, does anyone who lives there or owns interest in it, or do they agree to the petition, everybody who has an interest has submitted a petition, and then it's to be heard from all the munis, the residents or people who own property in the municipal corporation, do they think it's desirable to take on the responsibility that comes with the annexation?
And that's not our rule.
Roman law, actually. Get it back that far.
The, aside from that, I apologize, Mr. Dillian, there was confusion on that.
But everything you said is on the record and very relevant to the zoning.
Yes, ma'am.
I live in the city limits, but, and I'm his neighbor, I live on Pennwood Creek. And he had photographs, I don't have photographs, but when he mentioned earlier about the rise of that creek level, it is tremendous.
It is.
It really is, and if we turn that seventy-five acres into a parking lot, which is essentially what happens when you put asphalt and concrete together, and you get a parking lot, and then I can't imagine what that creek's gonna look like.
Well, the engineers are required by law to make it look no worse than it looks now, we will see if that's
That's good.
We will see if that's attainable, if, if this goes forward, I don't, I, I question that myself, but, but that, that's the burden placed upon them.
Right, 'cause it is right at the top of the hill of our
Yes, you're correct, it certainly is.
Right, that's all, thank you.
Any other takers, any other speakers that meet our requirements, or the state's requirements, to be more specific? Okay, hearing none, we'll revert back to, I'm getting my notes. All right, so we've had our presentation, we've had our testimony, we are now at
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Protem. We have an annexation ordinance prepared by the city attorney, making the annexation effective upon adoption, and staff recommends adoption by reference.
Okay. Is there any further questions?
Yeah, I have a question.
All right.
I would like to see this area in the city, I would like to see a housing development here, I believe that one could be done here, but I just think there's too many houses here relative to topography and the road, and so I'm kind of, do I vote for annexation, or I don't, you know, or, because I don't, I'm not vote for what he wants, should I not vote for annexation? That's kind of where I'm at, I mean, does anybody can answer that question?
The most decisive, I obviously cannot give advice as far as how you should vote, I can tell you, though, that the most decisive vote you can cast that ends the whole thing is if the annexation fails, because annexation translates to transfer of jurisdiction.
Correct.
Without the transfer of jurisdiction, there is no zoning authority for the city to
Without sounding prejudicial on the matter, if you're to be consistent, your vote should probably be decisive. But that's up to you, but that was my point about
That's what I was kind of debating about, but I mean, I, you know, I, this area, I feel has, it should be a housing development at some point in time, the man, he has a right to, you know, to use his land, but what he wants to do is just right, you know, but I just, I just think there's too, too, too many houses here, and the topography's not good, with that many houses, and so I'm, I think the county zoning is much, it would be much better, you know, to build a housing development there with, so.
And, and a slightly different scenario, but as an example of Bill's dilemma, I have in fact, made a motion and voted for to place something in a zoning district, and then vote against the conditional use, but we had to get off square one, you know, to get, to get a step done, so, so whether or not it would be, I could go this far, you know, Bill, if you thought it, if would, if it'd make a good subdivision with water and sewer under some number of conditions, that's my example of the zoning, then you can vote yes, if you don't like the project, then you vote no for the project, you know, maybe the man comes back, if it fails, he comes back with some other design, but that's not what's in front of us, that's what's in front of us tonight, is the design he has submitted.
And if I might add, the other thing to keep in mind is, if you vote for annexation, but then this particular application fails, if it's annexed, the city will have an obligation to apply zoning to it within sixty days, if its city wants to avoid having a zone where there's no zoning in effect.
You can look down the list of our choices. You can look down the list of our choices, and it's most likely gonna be residential.
Exa- and, but it will not be conditioned.
It will have no conditions.
It'd have no conditions on it, if that happened, because the city would not have a site plan to put forward.
For instance, if it, if we used to pick R six, he could put a hundred more houses on there. If we used to pick R forty, he could put a quarter of the houses on there. And, and R forty planning states and our land development plan, that's, that's generally for parcels not served by sewer, so. I'm just saying, it, it's, as I started off the evening, this is a little messed up backwards, but this is what the states give us to work with, so here we sit. At this point, is there any further questions, commentary?
No, I'm fine, thank you.
Is there any questions on this end?
I, I mean, I sur- I, I share Bill's concerns about the, the density, um, and the comment that was made about R fifteen. I know we wouldn't be able to have as much input on buffers and open spaces and sidewalks and all those things, right, correct?
It is zoning by right, rather than a conditional zone, we're just zoning by negotiation.
He'll pick setbacks, he'll pick the roads, he'll pick everything. No recreation, nothing.
A- and I think back in some of the commentary where people said that whatever zoning was approved and, and if it abutted another property, that it, there would be bigger houses to, and that is not the case in what happened behind my home. And when I look at what's on these papers here, what he is proposing is significantly better than what got behind my house. When the survey markers went up two days after I bought the property. Now, it took them, you know, through a recession and everything, but it took them like eighteen years when they started building, but they still built by the code from eighteen years ago, or twenty years ago, whenever the thing started, because that's what they had. Uh, our codes today are stricter than what were put behind my house back then. Uh, yeah, I'd, I'd rather see this behind my house than what's there now. And I live on Old Liberty Road, if you'd like to go back and look at the development behind my house.
Well, there's a three hundred and fifty unit going across straight from my neighborhood, and a four hundred unit going about two miles down the road, but that's neither here nor there. Tonight, it's about, are we at the point to have a motion to annex this property into the city limits? And do I have a motion to do so?
Mr. Mayor Protem, I move we adopt the ordinance extending the city limits by reference.
Mr. Bell has made a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second, Mr. Burks, all in favor, please say aye.
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 Alright. I believe that carries four to one, five to one. Okay, we've concluded that step, and I now close the public hearing on the annexation matter, I, I believe, Mr. So. So at this point, we will come out of continuation, and we've closed the public hearing on seven A, and so now we're in the deliberative state.
Correct.
So we will now, uh, uh, defer to counsel. Are there any questions counsel has, any information you desire from the applicant, or I suppose anyone else that's in the room? Okay, going once, going twice. Uh, well, he- hearing no further information or testimony or further required, I believe, I believe we've covered the matter. At this juncture, um, I will, um, uh, ask for a motion on the project as conditioned, as presented at this time.
Is that with or without that additional condition?
Well.
That Mr. Evans read.
My understanding is that would be since Mr. Evans got up and presented, that would be with the additional condition, was the last one them?
Um, the last one.
I've lost track of a couple of these cases and the number of them.
I think it was W.
Just as long as we're clear on the record that you're including now, as far as if you make a motion.
There was a limitation and reduction of the sidewalk as it approached, in the buffer zone, and was there additional?
An increase in the buffer zone, you're eliminating that one lot?
But.
That wa- well, that was suggested by the op, uh, the neighbors, I don't know.
That was never read into the record as an additional condition, and applicant never agreed to that, the applicant, you correct me wrong, but the applicant only agreed to that one.
Yeah, that was me talking about, if this were to go forward, there's a, there's a likelihood of, of, uh, uh, depending on this easement matter, that something may have to be readdressed there, but tha- uh, other than that, that's all it's, uh, agreed to, had I heard.
Correct.
Alright, so are we good on the conditions, now, is the, is the applicant agreeable to all the conditions as presented?
That's right, yes.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor Protem, I move we approve the conditional zoning, uh, requested, together with the conditions proposed by staff as amended, uh, regarding the sidewalk, uh, buffer, in the buffer, uh, that are amenable to the applicant.
We have a motion by Mr. Bell, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Burks, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
I'm, I'm a no.
Uh, pardon?
No.
Okay, we've got one, two, three, four, aye, and all against signify by saying nay.
Nay.
And two nay, so the motion carries four to two.
And Mr. Mayor Protem, just to make sure the clerks' minutes are correct, in all the discussion, that motion did include.
The consistency statement.
Consistency statement, thank you, you knew what I was looking for.
And now, have, have we fumbled through this as best we can, Mr. So?
We had, the minutes will reflect your action.
Thank you, kindly, I hope. Most kindly. Uh, well, uh, uh, I'm, I'm sure this is like, uh, many, many items, uh, no, nobody's probably leaving a hundred percent happy, and we do apologize for that, we will endeavor to make this as comfortable as possible as it goes forward, thank you.
We appreciate your time, we're not leaving 'cause we're furious, we're leaving 'cause we haven't had dinner yet.
Well. We're, we're, we're only staying 'cause we're required to.
We're required to. I'm afraid it's ridiculous.
Thank you.
Okay, folks, thank you very much for your patience, uh, and, and, and careful consideration of these matters, uh, uh, uh. If the citizens were aware, they would be appreciative. Thank you. We've placed a lot of faith in you, don't let us down. Thank you. Because if you mess up, we're gonna blame Christian.
We're halfway through the agenda.
Yeah, lucky us.
I just counted it from time.
Well, thank goodness, thank goodness all items are not created equal. Y'all keep up if you can.
Yeah.
Number nine.
Letter.
Uh, Mr. Leonard, chop, chop, get these annexations right off. Look around you, nobody here cares.
Thank you, Mr. Mo- Mayor Protem, uh, this is for the property circled in light blue there. Um, this is, uh, consideration of petition received from JRE Ashboro LLC requesting satellite annexation, uh, containing thirty point seven nine acres and located along US Highway sixty-four east. This item was presented at the September fourth, twenty twenty-five city council meeting. Resolution has been properly advertised, and now's the time for public hearing.
Um, I, I will be sure everybody, that, that's the John Deere Equipment and JRE James River Equipment, so that's a, 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 a si- a sizable conglomerate and taxpayer that's asking for this. Okay. So is there anyone here that would like to testify about this matter? Now that we've exhausted the qualifications required to give testimony. Um, hearing done, you may proceed.
Uh, you have in your, uh, packets an annexation ordinance prepared by the city attorney making the annexation effective upon adoption, and staff recommends adoption by reference.
Uh, we have a recommendation from staff, do I have a motion?
Mr. Mayor Protem, I will make the motion that we approve this ordinance by reference.
Motion of Ms. Heath, do I have a second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Bell, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, okay, good for you, Mr. Leonard, thank you. Alright, I've carried your water long enough tonight. Tell us about your water.
That's a good one, I like that.
That's triple entendre.
Good evening, Mayor Protem and members of the council.
Next meeting, I'm gonna let them scold you direct.
Okay. So, going back in the history, in March of, March seventh, the March seventh, twenty-four meeting, um, you, uh, passed a resolution supporting our application for a state grant. The grant was funded through, uh, the federal bipartisan, uh, infrastructure law of twenty-one, and it provided federal investment in water infrastructure, including emerging contaminants. Uh, we were, were to the grant in August of twenty-four. Um, going through the process to select, uh, a firm and, um, solicit those services, we have done that. We received six statements of qualifications, there is an agreement, we selected HDR as the most qualified responsive, um, submittal. And with that, there is a, an agreement for professional services in your packet, item number ten. Um, the firm has already executed that document, and in it, it's, it's developing scope services, helping us plan for funding for future improvements, evaluating our existing conditions, uh, testing in those options, and evaluating options for treatment, and providing a final technical memorandum that will help, that will recommend a final alternative for moving forward.
So there, there will be, there, after they, or do we already know the level at the plant?
There, there, we, we have.
We know the raw water level.
From UCR, raw, raw water level from UCR five, yes.
Uh, how far apart is that from the treated water level, or do we know that?
We don't know treated water level.
We don't know that yet.
No.
And, uh, but, so they're gonna evaluate our treatment facilities of what they're capable of.
Correct.
And, uh, uh, and then make recommendations on what that horrific estimate's gonna be.
You, you, you understand completely, yes.
Okay.
So, any other questions?
So what you need out of us?
Is to allow the city manager to execute this document.
And the short, and we, short story is we have no choice.
You, you.
We've got picture of it.
Federal law says we're gonna have to do something by, well, the law, the rule that's in place right now is.
But they don't know what, they don't know how much.
The, the rule in place right now is twenty twenty-nine, um, the EPA's agreed it's gonna be twenty thirty-one, but they haven't signed that yet, so.
And we don't know the status of getting any money out of anybody, out any.
Other than we're in, we're in for, um, um, class action suits right now, and we aren't getting any funding from that.
And you, municipalities are sucking up all the money, where the private water systems aren't getting anything yet. I'm saying, just wanna make sure in the works.
Michael, I've got one question for you.
Yes.
So there's meetings that are representing here, regular meetings, who from the city will attend those?
Uh, it's been sta- it's water plant staff, um, yeah, it's water resources staff so far.
Got it.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, no further questions of Mr. Roman, uh, do I have a motion by reference to?
Mr. Mo- Protem, I, uh, make a motion that we authorize Mr. Duncan to enter an agreement for professional services.
A motion from Mr. Bell, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Swiers, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Alright, where's Nate?
Mayor Protem.
Uh, yeah.
I, I'll ask you a quick question, do you wanna bypass this item, just as we'll move it to next month's agenda, just in the essence of time? Y'all have seen this original proposal, but if you wanna do it, do it, it's, it's almost eleven o'clock.
It's, there's, there's no action gonna be required from it, but it's just, it's just the same theory.
No action, it's here for your consideration.
Yeah, let's move along, alright. Next month, you will, are you serious, will you?
It's, it's fine with me.
No, it's not, that's not fine with me, though. Uh, I, 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 when I was saying, I said, well, he'll be here, the, have you worked hard on this, Eddie?
Uh, people have.
Come on, don't, don't let this big bully intimidate you, get on up there.
You got thirty seconds.
I'll try and be as quick as possible, um, thank you, Mr.
You know what we is getting paid, we ain't no better boat than you are.
Yeah. I can leave at noon tomorrow, um, well, thank you guys for having me.
I work at night, so.
Quite excited to, uh, talk about this, um, I've worked pretty hard on it, as has, uh, Donald and Trevor, they've helped me get it nice and polished, uh, as mentioned, we don't have any action for you today. Uh, we're still trying to nail down all the eligibility requirements, but I'm quite proud of it as our, uh, our staff and the EDC, DAI, and, uh, the chamber, who have also been working with, and I'll tell you more about that later on. So yeah, the, uh, the goal of the small business grant package is, uh, to support our small businesses in the area. They're really essential to our community, um, these are your friends and neighbors who are earning money and paying employees who live here and keeping the money here, as well as participating in civic organizations, social organizations. And it's, uh, it's important that we support them, um, forty percent of the workers in Randolph County work at companies with less than a hundred employees, this is from twenty twenty-two, and seventy-six percent of the businesses in the county have less than twenty employees, so. Um, it's, it's a majority, and it's important that they have support, because right now, a lot of the, uh, money that goes to businesses is taken up by larger firms who are just out resourcing these smaller businesses. Um, they're not applying for, or they're not qualifying, I should say, for any state and federal funding, so we kinda wanted to step in and give them a leg up, if you will. So as I said, the purpose is to just make it generally more attractive to private investment, especially from small businesses. Um, some secondary goals are to create new jobs that provide a livable wage, uh, not just any sort of job, but making sure that it can support someone's living, as well as, uh, we've got a lot of vacant buildings in our area, and in the past two decades, there's been a lot of reactivation of some previously vacant buildings, but we think it's important to try and utilize as much of the city as possible, so that is the third goal. So, the idea is that there will be one application, and that businesses can opt in based on what their project or what their goal is to, to of our new programs, um, it's a policy, not an ordinance, and that gives us some flexibility to hopefully uh, add new programs in the future and keep it on one application, and just make it more streamlined for business owners, as well as, um, if we need to adjust any eligibility requirements, it'll just be procedurally more easy. So the two programs right now are the Local Jobs Creation Grant and the Building Reuse Grant, and these are pretty heavily based on, uh, the State Building Reuse Grant, it's kind of splitting it into two, and it's also based on some programs that Donald has used in the past in his other jobs. So the first Local Jobs Creation Grant, this is intending to just pay business owners after they create a certain number of jobs and maintain those jobs for six months after they create them, so right now it's up to two thousand dollars per verified job, um, and that's a minimum of five jobs, a maximum of fifteen. And as I said before, we can, we're still in talks of adjusting some of these eligibility requirements, but that's a pretty good threshold for they're creating a significant amount of jobs, but they're not, uh, they're not qualifying for any larger funds from the state or anything. Also, as I said, high-quality jobs are what we want, we don't just want to reward businesses for giving someone a minimum wage, so right now, we have it at ninety percent of the average wage for Randolph County, which is around forty-four thousand dollars right now. And they have eighteen months to do it currently, and eighteen months to get the jobs, and then six months to retain the jobs before we pay them out. So it's important to note that these are performance-based, and we're not putting the city at risk at all of losing money, 'cause we're not giving it to them, to them upfront, we're just gonna pay them after they've retained the jobs. Secondly, the Building Reuse Grant's focused on reactivating some of the vacant spaces, and this is heavily based on the state's Building Reuse Grant. What we're planning is a fifty-fifty cash match for eligible projects up to twenty-five thousand dollars, so if I spent twen- if I spent fifty thousand dollars on an eligible project, I would, could get twenty-five thousand dollars back from the city once I've proved, once I've provided a receipt, basically. So there's a lot of eligibility requirements, um, we're trying to make sure that these are improvements to the building that will be lasting. Um, you couldn't, you couldn't pay for a peanut butter sign with this project, um. There's, business signage is not a part of it, it's focused-
You could pay for peanut butter makers.
Yes, you could, you could, or H V A C, or like-
Wish you could get something to sell, you buy a sign.
Yeah, yeah.
If you get chocolate, you can put it together.
So, yeah, it's focused on like code improvements or getting buildings up to, up to standard, um, but it's specifically focused on buil, buildings that have been vacant for three months prior to the application. It's not for someone who's been putting off a project for a long time, and then they find out they can get some money for it, and they decide to build ramps or something like that. We're trying to be as strict as possible, but make sure that these are legitimate improvements to the building. If that business were to leave, the, the next person can still-
Permanent improvement.
Yeah.
Windows or doors or whatever.
Yeah. So for the timeline of what an applicant would go through, I mentioned earlier that we're partnering with the, uh, E D C Chamber and D A I to work on this, and that's because we don't wanna burden our staff anymore or too much by having someone have to be, uh, like a full-time administrator of this program, so the idea is that they will either be approached by one of these organizations or will approach them to help prepare and submit an application. Um, and then after they've prepared and submitted that application, they'll actually have a public hearing with the Redevelopment Commission, which I know y'all are familiar with, but they are more of an advisory committee right now and don't really have any real responsibilities, so we thought that this would be a good way to give them more responsibility and have them be the ones who are judging eligibility and whether this is aligned with what the program's goals are. So then, following their public hearing decision on the application, you guys would have the final authority to approve those funds or veto those funds for whatever the project is. So looking forward, like I said, it's still up in the air on some of these eligibility requirements, so we're gonna be working with our partner agencies and, uh, staff to finalize everything. Hopefully, we can get something to y'all that's, that I'm ready for you to read soon. And we're also gonna start drafting some of those performance agreements, 'cause it's important that contractual obligation, of course. Um, and then, as I mentioned before, we're talking about adding some more programs in the future under this same application. Uh, I don't know how much this has been discussed, but the system development slash acreage fees for the utility system, if those are adopted, we're considering a reimbursement program for businesses that have, uh, paid into the utility system significantly, as well as maybe some geographically targeted programs towards like North Ashboro, for instance, or, um, focused on mixed-use development in downtown residential and commercial. So, yeah, um, we're really excited about this, I know everyone at the partner organizations is nice, or is, uh, glad to have another tool in their kit, so to speak, so welcome any comments or questions from you guys.
Any questions? I think it's a wonderful program.
Absolutely, thank you for your work.
For the, for the forgotten small business person, truly small business person. You know, the S B A, I think they say small business is under five hundred employees or something like that, and twenty-five million dollars a year in sales, isn't that about, about the right number? Um, and, 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 uh, it takes a team of jests to fill out an application, get a loan from them. When we first went into business, that's how we got our rich first performance bond, you know, and that, and Lord have mercy. But anyway, but at least it was programmed that, that, that's the point. So when are you leaving us?
It's not been determined yet.
Well, you know you ain't gonna be here in November.
I hope I get to tell you guys more about this. We'll see if I find something else, yeah.
Okay, so you might keep him?
Discussing option.
Okay. You better hope you done a good job.
Straighten up.
Well, thank you, thank you very much for the hard work on that, I think it's, uh, uh, an unusual pilot program for this area. Clearly, it's been, been done before and been successful, so that's what we're, uh, it's the kind of thing that'll make us stand out and be different, and that's what we're looking for.
Hope so. Good job.
Nate, thank you.
Thank you.
Stand by, you may still be in the running.
I think you may, I should've waited till November to present this thing.
All right, you in the running. So, uh, that brings us to item twelve, and several items here, uh, uh, to proceed with some real estate transactions, so.
Yes, sir. I'll be happy to elaborate, but I'm assuming you want me to try to get as quickly as I can to the point, and I'll do that.
It's seven o'clock, I'd want that.
I can appreciate that. So the first one, uh, item A, you had a good discussion with the Assistant City Manager at the last regular meeting, talking about the delays that came up for the Emergency Operations Center and Fire Station Three. Part of that land transaction, back when the property was acquired, there was a temporary access agreement. By the way, it says non-exclusive, after all that discussion we had earlier.
Yeah.
That it's non-exclusive for, uh, Tanner.
At least we know what we said.
We try to, anyway.
Not grandpa us.
Don't always succeed, but we try. Tanner Investment Properties, uh, Dan Tanner, uh, he worked with us in preparing to get access to his property. The bottom line is, you seemed okay with moving forward, since we've had delays, give him twenty-four more months. This agreement that is in front of you, it's an amended temporary access easement agreement. It is materially the same, with one huge exception, that's the date. Uh, it was originally recorded in December of twenty-twenty-three, it had, and if you go to section two, that would be the third page back. Section two is duration and maintenance, the huge change here is that it expires, one, whenever the, the public infrastructure is open. If it's not open regardless, it expires without further action by you on December thirty-one, twenty-twenty-seven. Under no circumstan, by no further action, it just expires in the absence of further action. There's a minor change I made on the notice section because of the change in city manager. Uh, I would ask that if you're okay with this for approval, uh, of the material terms here, and I say material because I still wanna confirm with Mr. Tanner that he hasn't changed some of his notice information or something like that. But this would expire December thirty-one, twenty-twenty-seven, recommend approval. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions, Rich Sut?
Mr. Mayor Protem, I will make a motion that we approve the material, what was that you said, John? Material-
Material terms.
Material terms, um, in the amended temporary access easement agreement, as presented.
A motion of Ms. Heath, uh, second?
Second.
Mr. Burke? Uh, all in favor, please say aye.
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 Motion carries, next item?
Okay, the next item is going to be a matter of, we're, we're about to head into two leasing items. Neither one of these agreements is up for approval tonight, I am seeking in both of them authorization to do the required advertising. The problem comes up because the next meeting is on November the sixth, the December meeting is on Dec, is on December the fourth. I can't meet the thirty-day minimum requirement, but just by the way the calendar works, without going ahead and getting approval now, and so advertising, advertisement will happen between now and then. It'll be back on at the December fourth meeting for final action on the lease.
Will it be new business or old business?
Don't keep us here all night.
Will it be new business or old business?
We, I, we have, historically, I'll always follow directions, historically, if we've, if you've approved the advertisement, we historically have treated it as old business.
As old business.
As old business, so it-
Don't look like it's getting approved, does it, Clark?
I think we might need to wait till next time to do the, uh-
Uh, if you, if you entertain me, anyway, going forward. The first one relates to the elevated water tank on Highway forty-nine. Uh, you'll recognize the names, we thought we had completed the process, but because of mergers and acquisitions, records were lost on that elevated water tank. We have a copy, but A T and T, they're not going by that name, this will be with New Singular Wireless P C F L L C. Bell South Site, and there was an A T and T site, one left, one stayed. In the process of records going on, they can't find the original agreement, but they did just within approximately a year move up to the high end, and have been making payments consistently for that tank, as well as the one you just, uh, within about a year ago, you approved for the South Church Street Tank. I have been, I am obligated as part of the negotiations to relay to you that I took a stance that could, according to them, cause it not to be an anchor site that remains for many years, 'cause they said it's on the high end of the rent that they pay for comparable elevated water tanks. The, uh, our, and they also were asking for more flexibility, because of changes in technology, to make upgrades. Our current agreement, we don't use form agreements from other entities, we have our own, and it requires, uh, the submission of drawings and doing studies on frequency and interference that has to be approved either by the city manager or the Water Resources Director in writing. So discussing how they were trying to optimize and potentially could cost a site, they said they needed something from us. The something from us that I indicated, and be sure and correct me if I am in error, the something that, the one, the thing I did say the city would consider is they would get an additional five-year term, but that's five years on the current term, at the current rate, they moved up in approximately twelve months ago. Then there's a second, within, I will refer to it as the base term, that's five years, there's a second, there's a first extension term, that first extension term requires a fifteen percent escalation clause in what we are currently charging, so that's the first, uh, extension term. What they're getting extra from us that others haven't got is a second, 'cause we generally just go ten years, is the second extension term, but that second five-year extension term requires another fifteen percent escalation clause, and they said they would review it, but they were favorable to that, and that I should proceed in getting authorization to advertise the lease, if you're agreeable with that, recognizing that they were unhappy about not getting a reduction.
Of course they were.
Or more flexibility. So if it's agreeable with you, I'm re, seeking authorization to advertise, and we'll be on the December meeting for approval of the final document.
Are you gonna give, talk about giving a little more flexibility, but we're gonna get a lease extension with an increase?
Correct.
Is that, is that long or short of it?
That's the bottom line.
If I don't like that, we'll go clear talk. Somebody with good prices. I think that's fair and reasonable, I mean, 'cause who knows what, and even five years out, who knows where this technology's headed? I mean, if, if Elon Musk gives everybody a satellite phone, then all you got's a bunch of lightning arrestors up there.
And they, and there are abilities for them to end the agreement, but they have to get off the tank if they end the agreement, so.
That won't be cheap either.
Correct.
So anyway, well, you know, it's just a bunch of posturing, like you said.
I was obligated to relay the concerns and the risk that the city's taking. If you're okay with it, I'll seek authorization to advertise.
Do you need a motion or consent?
Yes, I need a motion on that.
A motion, all right, so, uh, do I have a motion to authorize city attorney to advertise for the described lease agreement?
So move.
So move, Ms. Heath?
Second.
Second, Mr. Swiers, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay.
As long as it's first on the agenda.
Or you may not have a call.
Do this, certainly, I take everything you say seriously. With your permission, I'll go, I'll go to C. On C is for the Civil Air Patrol hangar space at the Ashboro Regional Airport. I'm in discussions, we haven't, they've had change in personnel, so that's our main point. Unlike the other, there is no escalation clause in this. Civil Air Patrol has been there for years in the space, they go on three-year terms, it's a dollar a year, and we just asked that they pay the three dollars upfront, and so their current lease expires.
And I sent fifteen percent too? You asked them for fifteen percent increase too?
I did not, I, I left it, I said, we'll leave it. It said, uh, but it expires at the, uh, end of December, December thirty-one. They would like to get it renewed, and for the same reason, this is not up for approval, but I didn't, would like to have a motion authorizing the advertisement of the intent for that lease to be dealt with. And Mr. Leonard will let the airport, discuss it with the airport authority at their meeting, so they're in the loop about this.
Okay, do I have a motion to, I'm just saying, to advertise for a lease agreement with Civil Air Patrol?
So move.
So move, Mr. Burke?
Second.
Second, Mr. Swier, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And there you go, next?
All right, the next is an agreement of purchase and sale that you should have in your, uh, folder. This pertains to property on East Aldridge Street, one of the addresses, if you look it up on G I S, is four oh four. East Aldridge Street is in proximity to the Public Works Facility. City manager, I said I did not have anything, the other, I wasn't directly involved in the negotiation, the manager handled the negotiation and was able to secure a purchase price, uh, for this. It is currently owned, uh, one-half undivided interest for Jimmy Wayne Presnel, trustee of the Jimmy Wayne Presnel Family Trust. Uh, the other one-half undivided interest is Ashland Farms L L C. The general manager for that is Taylor Calicut. I have spoken with Mr. Calicut, they are amenable, uh, thanks to their negotiation with the city manager to sell that property to the city for seventy-five thousand dollar purchase price. This off, this, uh, agreement uses our standard terms, the standard, uh, in addition to the contract price, the seventy-five thousand, it gives us an inspection period to look at things, it's vacant, but we still, we take a look at things. Inspection period runs till the Friday after the council meeting in November, so if there is a problem, you have the ability to tell us that we can back out. We don't anticipate that at all. Then it divides up closing costs like you normally would, as far as city pays the recording, uh, fee. The seller is responsible for preparing the warranty deed, general warranty deed that's required, and we pay the excise tax, and we will prorate property taxes on a calendar year basis. If that's okay, if the council's okay with that, there will be a second ordinance, uh, coming from amendment, coming, Ms. Reeves will present that accounts for this if you authorize the execution of this agreement.
Okay, and that requires a motion, and so do I have a motion to enter into this agreement of authorizes, uh, offer to purchase contract?
So move.
So move, Ms. Heath, uh, second?
Second.
Mr. Burke, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay, so is that handed off to Ms. Reeves?
Ms. Reeves at this point.
You waited a long time for this one, hadn't you?
I have, um, in your packets, um, should be an ordinance to amend the general fund for twenty-five, twenty-six, for a total of seventy-seven thousand dollars, which is a little bit of a roundup of the figures that, um, Jeff has, um, estimated to be the cost associated with the purchase and the closing cost associated with his property. The recommended option by reference, if there are not any additional questions.
Do I have a motion to approve Ms. Reeves' budget allocation?
Move we adopt the, uh, ordinance to amend the general fund by reference.
Uh, Mr. Clarkson made a motion, do we have a, uh, second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Burke, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
I think we should encourage the seller to bore all the closing costs for pro-rations, being as he's an attorney and can do it in hell.
Just a recommendation.
In the trash business, dude.
Barely, he's in the trash business. Depending how many trucks we put out today.
Yes, all day.
Oh, man, okay. Gets us to that, oh, boy. Upcoming events. I wonder who two of us gonna do a little song and dance next, by December. Um, I have before you, uh, the, the events are, let's see, the most important one we need to pick out of here is, uh, uh, Employee Appreciation Day, uh, although we do have candidate orientation, but the ones of us sitting up here already know all that. Um, uh, October fifteenth, eleven A M, was it Corn Home Turn, Tournament, uh, uh, Homemade Ice Cream?
They're warming up in the hallway down here.
Now, they better get on with it. Uh, and then we have, uh, uh, a project that's near and dear to my heart for the ribbon cutting for the Collin City Zoo C Sports Plex office there, where, uh, we'll be, uh, 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 having a honorarium and a ceremony to, for Mr. Clayton Terry Tucker for his generous work for that building, hope everybody can make that, homecoming parade, um. Let's see, then we got our normal, it's bluegrass music, great trails of state, and then trick-or-treat downtime. That's always fun, is there anything else anybody would like to bring to our attention? Hearing none, this is where I usually get it to start on a different motion, but to not. Counsel, I will move that we go into closed session to consult with the city attorney about lawsuits involving Greensboro, Rizville, the North Carolina Department of Environmental Quality, Endo-Rama- Endorama Ventures USA LLC, Star Pet Incorporated, Cape Fear River Watch, and the Hall River Assembly. Do I have a motion?
Uh, Mr. Mayor Protem, I move we go into closed session to consult with the city attorney about the lawsuit involving Greensboro, Reevesville, the North Carolina Department of Environmental Quality, Endorama Ventures USA LLC, Star Pet Inc., Cape Fear River Watch, and Hall River Assembly.
Have a motion from Mr. Beldow, second?
Second.
Say it, Mr. Burke, on favor please say aye.
Aye.
All right, folks, thank, thank y'all for coming.